I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got a good connection with you, Mr. Spalding?
Yes, I hear you guys well.
Excellent. Has everyone signed in for the book? So I need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. I believe the town manager has a change that he would love it, like us to put in.
Yes, please. We'd like to remove the, at eight o'clock, the tandem dump truck purchase.
Anything else?
The feasibility study for the former CVS. We solicited companies to do that, and one's too busy and the other one has not replied, so we can take that off. And Stephanie Burke is supposed to be here for that local hazard mitigation plan, but if she doesn't show up, she won't be able to speak on it.
All right, we'll deal with that when the time comes.
Other than that, that would be it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the changes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, approval of the minutes in the previous meeting?
I make a motion we approve the minutes of January 8th, 2024.
Second?
It was moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Couple of changes. On page two, under Recreation Update, I want clarification more. It said that they're starting to get walking programs again and working on a senior center and hoping to get it started from nine to noon. How often? Is it one day a week, three days a week, five days a week?
My recollection was that was daily, but I don't know that for sure.
I can follow up and maybe have an answer by the end of the meeting, but I don't recall the top half of the numbers.
And on page two, on page two, on the quotes and replacements of the, right at the top, the second line, this is Mike Jones stated, the 2011 one-on-dump, I think it should be one-ton dump?
That's correct.
And down, appointment of the health officer. Let's see. You made the motion. I don't know who seconded it. It was voted yes, but I don't know who seconded it.
I don't recall who seconded it. The change I was going to have made there, same paragraph, the last line should be that I made the motion to appoint Mike Jones as the deputy health officer, appointment to begin not being January 9th, 2024, for a term of three years. In my honest, do you recall who seconded that motion, Joe? I do not.
I don't.
I can check the recording.
Okay, Allison, yeah, I know it was approved unanimously.
Yeah, we all agreed on it. That's all I have.
Couple small things. On the first page, this is really a question regarding the Lake Bomazine Environmental Alliance. Is it incorporated as an LLC? Is that correct?
Currently, we're in the process of being 501(c)(3).
That's what I thought, not an LLC. The third page, paragraph third from the bottom, that starts M. Jones reviewed. My recollection is that we agreed, I don't recall whether we voted on this, but we agreed to include the previous year's amount in the article.
We did not vote on that, but we did, we did by consensus agree to do that.
Right. That's it. Thank you.
Anything, Bob?
Oh, I'm good. You guys covered it all.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed? Citizens' comments and concerns, items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board?
Yep.
Please come up to the podium and identify yourself. We don't know your name, Matt.
Matt Brown from Castleton. I don't know if you guys know about this, but to help manage the four rail trails in the state of Vermont, VTранs in the state, they had some initiative to start these rail trail councils, one for each rail trail. So it's at Rutland Regional, there's one for the DNH rail trail, and the purpose is to like develop a maintenance plan and also help like promote the trail and organize maintenance. So the councils want to have somebody from each town as like a town representative to the rail trail councils, so they've, I just wanted to participate. And so I was going to ask, I was supposed to request you guys appoint me as Castleton's representative to the rail trail council.
Okay, Matt, so I suppose it's good news we didn't appoint your father last meeting.
No, I know, so he-
His name came up and we decided not to do that without his consent.
That was probably good, but he would serve as an alternate if need be, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
The rec director attended, I think, one of the online or webinar things, because he thought he was going to be appointed at it, and so I would ask that you consider him as well if you're going to do an alternate.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, you know, a competitive position or anything, and if John wants to be on it, he and I have been texting a little bit about the rail trail and some like recreation plans, so, you know, we could both liaison before, between the two if we need to.
How soon do you need or do we need to make an appointment?
I don't know when the next meeting is scheduled, but they're monthly, so, I mean, next meeting, even if it's not for a couple of meetings, I don't think that it needs to be official. I'll still just go to the meetings, me or John.
Yes, I think it might be best, and anyone else can pipe up. My opinion at this point is if you and John put your heads together and come up with a plan, I'm pretty confident we'll endorse that.
Perfect.
But if you guys have some sort of a plan between, you know, you and John and perhaps your father, and come up with a plan and tell us what it is-
Yep.
-I got a feeling we'll be happy to endorse that.
Gotcha. Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys. You're welcome.
Anything else? Items not on the agenda?
Anybody on Zoom?
I only see three people on Zoom, or four.
Anybody else?
Three.
No, somebody else. Somebody in Zoom have, they want, something they want to bring up that's items not on the agenda?
I'm good, thanks. Just listening.
Thank you.
All right, then we're going to move on. Rutland Regional Planning Commission, regional plan update and engagement efforts. I believe this is, Maggie O'Brien is going to come and fill us in.
Take one of these and pass it around. I hope you follow along.
Thank you.
So for those of you who don't know me, Maggie O'Brien, regional planner with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I only expect to take five minutes, maybe 10, depending on if there's any questions, so it won't be too long here. So as mentioned, I am here to talk about our regional plan update, and what we're looking to do with our update is, we're looking to seek community input at large. So like a municipal plan, every eight years, a regional planning commission must have a regional plan update. This is as entitled in Vermont statute, it's something that we're required to do by law, but it's also something that's good to do as times change, and you want to keep up to date, keep, keep your finger on the pulse of what's going on in the community. So we just kicked off our engagement period for our regional plan outreach in the late winter, sorry, late December of 2023. And we are essentially here to ask for your help to ensure that the priorities that we put in our plan reflect the needs and desires of the residents of the region. So has anyone either on the board or in this room know about the latest version of our regional plan? I believe it was 2018 was the last time it was updated. It's okay if the answer is no. It's a plan that's been dragged around for many years, perhaps far too many years, and so we decided to wipe the slate clean, we're going to start over, freshen it up, and get some more relevant information in there. So what we envision the regional plan being is a collaborative guide to shape a healthy, resilient, and equitable region. So it's meant to guide where homes and businesses go, protect our natural resources, and ensure that our community remains a wonderful place to live, work, and play. The final documents itself will outline strategies for achieving collective goals regarding community economic development. And if you're wondering what community economic development is, it's essentially adding that aspect of, well, community to the economic development sphere, so having the citizens' inputs and including social networks that are already embedded into the community as a theme of that development. So as I mentioned, we adopted a community engagement strategy with the main goal of meeting people where they are. Now, if you were to select a public notice, as I'm sure you guys experienced with the LHMP update, people aren't likely to come because it's not convenient for their schedule and so forth. So what we've decided to do is go to community events, for example, that are already being held and having a pop-up table, and if anyone has any questions about like, oh, what's going on over here? We can let them know like, hey, this is who we are, this is what we're doing, and this is what we want your opinion on. We are also organizing community open houses for February and March, and there will be one in Castleton. I believe that one is in March, but there is the February?
No, March 2nd.
Okay, yeah. So that'll be one of five in the region, and those will be more formal, more formal Q and As, so to say. But we are also, we launched an online survey a couple of weeks ago, and this survey is the most comprehensive way to get input from the residents in the region, so it'll allow in-depth responses on a broad range of topics, but, but that's just one tool to get the information that we need to help shape our plan. Like I mentioned, we'll have the pop-up tables, and they'll have like little dot surveys where you can indicate what you think should be prioritized by the year 2034 in our region, and that'll kind of help us incorporate what we hear from our residents as we start writing this plan. So I'm here to ask the select board and anyone behind me if they're interested to help us spread the word about the survey, the regional plan survey that I mentioned. It's open from now until March 31st, and as a little incentive, at the end of the survey, if you submit your email address, you will be put in a drawing for a solo stove bonfire, smokeless bonfire. I've seen pictures, very nice. So we have a couple of ways to access the survey, and I do not have a presentation with me tonight because I got lulled into complacency with West Haven having only three people in the room. But in this packet, and I would be willing to share the presentation and the QR code itself for distribution. We have the QR code, as I mentioned, to link directly to the survey. We also have a regional plan website, which is www.rutlandrpc.org/plan2026. This website will also have which pop-up events we plan on, we plan on being at, and the dates of all the community houses and, and things like that. So essentially, the whole point of this is we want to get an idea of what Rutland, what people want Rutland to look like in the next eight years. And if you're wondering, or if people of the public are wondering why they should care about this, which is a very fair question, I would say that it allows your voice and your values and your concerns to be addressed in a cohesive way, because that's what the regional plan is. It's a cohesive blueprint focused on how we grow, develop infrastructure, and enhance our region for a vibrant, prosperous future. I would even argue that short of casting a ballot on election day, this is the best way for your voice to be heard by people who have influence and can actually help the towns with what they want to achieve. So with that, if you have any comments or questions at any point along the way, we do have a dedicated email box. That's plan2026@rutlandrpc.org. We also accept comments by physical mail at our P.O. Box 430. And that's all, unless anyone has any questions. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Maggie. Anybody, the board have any questions at this point? I don't believe we do, but I think we'd better start doing our homework as well.
Yes, and I would be happy to share a copy of the presentation and some of our outreach materials with the board if they would like to distribute those. We did drop off flyers at the town office and had them posted around town, but I'm happy to get that out there further if you guys would like to-
Is that something you could email to our administrator and-
Yes, certainly.
That, that person, she could distribute to the rest of the board and, and put it on the website or whatever else we deem appropriate?
Yep, I can definitely do that.
I did agree, I'm to a meeting in Rutland about this, so I know what's going on, and I agreed to put it on social media. The event, the open house, will be on March 2nd at the Village School, and in conjunction with an open house, a Village School open house, so we're trying to lure people in. But yeah, we're going to post this all out there once I had all the information.
Excellent, you guys are on top of it. Thank you so much.
Maggie. You're welcome. Rutland County Solid Waste, Tim?
I just wanted to give you a little update on what's going on. Currently, we've just passed our budget. It's up about 9%. However, the fees to the towns, as far as the $20.50 per ton, right now, we're looking at it staying the same. The administration did request an increase of a dollar and a half a ton, but the board wasn't inclined to do that, and that we've had a surplus the last couple of years, so we're fairly comfortable with letting it ride now and reevaluating later down the road to see if we need to do anything in terms of increasing fees or cutting back on costs would be my preference. Right now, Cassell's fees have gone up about seven and a half percent, I believe, which will get passed on to the haulers that come across the scales, so that won't affect us at all. We're, we have all the money for the water runoff program that we have to come up with, which is somewhere around $400,000. Between excess from last year and previous banking, we've been able to get the money for that. At first, our plan was to do it over a five-year period, but that would drive up the cost more as you go down the road, so we had the opportunity to do it all at once, and we'll do that. I think that'll be going out to bids shortly. We, I don't think there's anything too shocking going on.
Is that the Gleason Road facility, Tim, or both facilities?
I'm sorry.
Is that the Gleason Road facility or-
No, it's actually for the, the transfer, or the solid waste recycling center down there on, what road that's called right there, but by the sewer plant anyways, the old Vicom plant. For us people, I've been around the Vicom plant. But it's because it's over three acres, we have to come up with a water plan for runoff. There are some grants. The district has put about $25,000 a year into grants for towns, which would be matching. I think Poltoni just got one to re-sign at their transfer, at their transfer station, put up signs and so on, and I think the district paid half of that. There's a short form that you have to fill out in order to obtain that, and there's a description on the website of what sorts of things would apply for that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Mary Lee?
I've got some questions.
Joe? Okay, Mr. Spalding, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to know, Tim knows the assessed value of the property of the Rutland County Solid Waste District?
The assessed value of the property? Is that what you're asking?
What is the Rutland County Solid Waste District worth?
I don't know off the top of my head. Last I knew it was somewhere around $3 million, but that's, accountants change things with depreciation and so on, so I can't really give you an accurate answer on there, but it's substantial.
Okay. Second question I add is, when does the district take possession of the Gleason Road Transfer Station? From to the understanding, you guys have taken official possession of the MRF, Vicom plant, but when is, when is the date on you taking official possession of the Gleason Road Transfer Station, Tim?
Well, we have possession of it, but we pay Cassell, I think in 2025, it'll go the other way, they'll have to start paying the Solid Waste District.
Okay. And I think you answered my third question. The district surcharge, is that $20.47, $20.47 right now?
Yes. It appears that that will stay the same. As I said, there was some request to increase that, however, the board members yours included, we're not in favor of that, and so it's remaining where it is right now.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks.
Do we have a police chief?
He was at my office earlier, and he was, had one meeting ahead of us, and he planned on being here at 7:30, so.
What time is it now? Are we ahead of schedule?
Yeah, eight, ten.
Just a little bit. And we don't have Stephanie, so do you want to, Mike, do you want to address the local hazard mitigation plan?
Sure. Well, in your packet is an email from Stephanie to me that basically says that the Vermont Emergency Management, they've, they've looked at this, they, the questions that they had, the concerns that they had were adequately answered. Now, the next step is for the select board to adopt it, then return it back to Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and then they'll submit for final approval. So what's in front of you is just a copy of that planning tool. It's called Local Mitigation Plan Review Tool, with all those questions and things that were reviewed, and there's a status saying met or didn't meet, and everything that, that didn't meet is now been addressed, so now it's up to the board whether they want to adopt the plan that you saw earlier or late, late last year.
The one that was attached to the warning for the meeting on the website was, has been revised since the one, last hard copy we got, if I'm correct. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was the one that had, the board had a couple of things they, they had concerns with, and that was like personnel issues, and one of them was removed, one of them was kept in there, and there were some changes that were made on aquatic or nuisance plants, but there was not significant changes, and I don't know, sure if the board has a copy of, probably not with you.
I was not provided a hard copy of the last, last version, but I did go through it, the electronic version that was available on the internet.
This right here went through all that, the stuff that was on and that, so we've met the criteria, I guess, and now it's whether the board says, okay, we accept it and move on, move forward with it. I've already used this thing. It's not really adopted, but that whole nuisance, roadside vegetation, that's what was used to help create a narrative for that canopy grant that the highway foreman applied for.
Well, I'm ready to move forward. What's your pleasure, board?
I don't think I've seen the last version. Certainly haven't read it online, and I haven't received the hard copy version.
Okay, the only reason I read it or found it was I looked on our, the warning for our meeting, you know, on our website, and that's where I found it. But I was not directly provided one. So do we want to wait until the next meeting?
I would prefer it.
So our homework will be to review that prior to the next meeting.
Okay, no problem.
So I think, Mr. Town Manager, you need to provide us with a hard copy of that. I realize it's more paper, but I think, personally, I think it's easier to review something like that with a piece of paper in front of me.
Right. I mean, I was going to make the comment that Stephanie had said the plan and the adoption certificate were attached when, when they weren't, but as a general rule, I guess I would hope that anything that is included in the materials for any of our meetings is provided to the board directly as well.
My eyes don't like reading the computer.
So we can move on at this point?
Move back.
Agreed. We're going to move back to the police update. Chief Mantello, if you would join us, please?
I will. I will, so. Good evening. Good evening.
Okay, so we're in December for the December Monthly Report. I know some of you just got this today, even though it was got out last week, but as you can see, for Calls of Service, we did for December, 629 Calls of Service. Nothing significant really on the differences outside of the sex offender registry check that we do every quarter. It's required, mandated. Any questions on the Calls of Service?
Not here.
Okay. Criminal arrests, we're up, we had 11 in December.
We did have two sexual assault cases we have. One is closed, one is still operational. Any questions on those? Did have four DEWIs in December, too. That was, that was, I don't know why people still don't learn, but they just don't. Any questions on those? Traffic violations, we did 117, down from the previous month. And you can see the Calls of Service for the university in December, we had three, which has actually been pretty good for this year so far. Actually, I think this is like the first year since I've been here that we haven't actually issued any, any noise tickets for off-campus. And the other, and the backup provided by CPD, we did nine in December, as you can see how they were there. Most of them were in Fairhaven, six, and then two in Poltoni for VSP and Sheriff's Department. Steady month, we see our volume, we did, obviously, had four DEWI arrests. As you can see, that increased, they're still, they're still doing a lot of property checks, 156, which, you know, which is something they do every night. And they also did, they're doing more documented food patrols in the, in the local business We also did Castleton Cares, which we delivered 96 food boxes to Castleton residents. We also conducted a toy drive, which we had a very generous donor, Castleton resident, that actually got all the toys for us. We got ahold of district, got rid of a lot of them there, and other ones, we donated to another organization, six carloads. It was a lot of toys, a lot of toys. And I think that's it. There's really nothing more to say. In reference to the, since I put out the reward, I think I've received two. I put out the reward, I think I've received two tips. I'm not sure what Vermont State Police received. I haven't talked to the detectives, the two that are still working on the case. I ruled out my tips. No more...there's no more tips on the sketch. I think that's kind of...I think people are...when it first came out, we had a lot of them, but that's kind of slowed down real lot. Questions? Comments?
Yes, sir. Where are we on the noise ordinance? I know there was a timeline that required a delay in the adoption of that, allowing...
Well, I want to say that it was supposed to have been put out, right? Was it already put out to the public?
Should have been published.
Now, I don't think...I haven't seen any comments about it at all. Have you, Mike? So this next point, I think, I think it was 60 days, right? So we're going to be close to that probably. It'll be before it goes out, right? It goes out for adoption, correct? You'll adopt it after 60 days, or will you put it out?
We got to make another post out there.
That's what I'm saying, make another post on it. Okay.
I'm sorry. We have to make a second post?
Yeah, just let people, to be fair and transparent, to put the post out there saying, this, just a reminder, this has been adopted now, so that 60-day period's gone by.
Okay.
Just let the public know if they want to go look at it, because they'll have a link to it, so they can go find it on the website as well.
I do have to meet with a couple of local businesses that were, they want to understand what it really means for them. So I've got to meet with them and kind of explain to them a little more, even though I think it's self-explanatory. Really, it's a decibel rating thing. I think that's the biggest thing that they're a little confused on, which we have not ordered. Once it gets adopted, we'll order a meter.
What's the lead time on the meter?
What do you mean?
The lead time. When you order, how long does it take to get?
Oh, it won't take that long. I imagine a couple of weeks.
Okay.
It's not something that's, you know, and they got so many of them out there, I don't think everybody's buying them. And I'll make sure, what I'd like to do for the board is bring it in and just kind of demonstrate it, kind of demonstrate some sounds and just see what the readings, you know, what they would be. Is that fair?
Sure. That's a good idea.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have two.
Yes, yes, sir.
First question is, the flagrant speeding violations, are they on the same road still?
Yes.
That's what I assumed. So I've caught myself going faster than I should down that hill.
Yeah, that's...that is...that's...you know, we've been doing this since I've been here. I mean, I know a couple of officers go up there quite a bit, so that's something that...and some of them are repeat people, so...
And the second question, I know I've talked to you about this several times, and I don't recall where we left it. I really like those electronic signs going into towns, telling you, you know, telling you what your speed is and slow down.
Yes.
And where do we stand on those? I know we've discussed it several times, but I honestly don't recall.
We did look into some different models, but they're very expensive, like $3,000 to $4,000.
Okay, so how do we get other people's money to help us out with that?
That's a good question, but we haven't got that far yet.
We applied for one grant for those.
We didn't get it, though. Now, that was through...forget what that one was. That was early in the summer. We tried to get one.
How many do we have now?
Oh, you mean the mobile ones? We have actually three, but we usually use two. We've been putting them up on Creek Road, two different locations. We didn't have one on Main Street this year. We moved down Route 30 because of that intersection. We probably will do that again, since they had, we had that fatality, even though it's 40 through there, and it's got that blind spot as you come up over the hill. I say blind spot. I mean, when you're going south at the intersection, and you want to take a left, go east on Foray, you can't really see that dip. You have to hesitate before you take that turn.
Somebody's really coming up through there, and they see a green light.
Yeah, 40, you know?
Yeah.
And they're hurrying to get that green light.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm going to be a squeaky wheel on this, Chief, so I really want to see a couple of those in town, I think.
Okay. We'll work, we'll hopefully get something more concrete before spring.
So consider yourself harassed.
That's absolutely, that's fine.
I think that, I can think of a couple of places that leap out at me. One is going into the Village from the east.
Okay.
And the Four Corners, and perhaps coming in to Hydville from the west.
Yep.
Would be a good place, because I know they work. They work on me.
Yeah, when you see it, yeah, when you see it, and if you have the ones with a little flash and light, that's even more so.
And I've seen other people, you know, in front of me or behind me before, you know, they work.
Yeah.
They make people at least stop and think about what they're doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, you know, it would increase public safety, and I think it's worth the investment of your effort and our money to make the public safer.
I'll get on top of that, hopefully get something before springtime, because I think it's easier than moving things around. I mean, those carts are, one of them's pretty heavy. It's pretty bulky. The other one's fairly light.
I'm not saying get rid of the spleed carts.
No, no, but I mean, yeah.
On Creek Road, the summer is appropriate as well, elected one, but I think if we could eventually have three or four of those strategically placed around town, that would be...
Yeah, it would be nice to have cover all avenues coming in, you know, like you said, Foray, going east from the west side, the east side, Route 30 would be nice, and then Route 30 south. That'd be really the areas.
We got to start somewhere, so...
That's right.
Pick a spot and start working on it, please.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got one question.
Yes, sir, Bob.
Is there any obligation on the police departments, like a sex offender chooses to live on Route Foray, such and such place, is there any statute thing that you have to notify the neighbors, the local neighbors?
We don't...
Just move anywhere.
Correct. We don't have that responsibility as a law enforcement agency or the town. They have the responsibility and the agency that's releasing them. Like, we had just one recently come in from New York. I don't know how they advertised it or how they put it out, whether they got ahold of it. I didn't see anything on it, but he reported to us that he was moving in a location, so then they have to report to us minimumly to, so that they don't violate their residence requirement.
Okay, so as a neighbor, I won't be...what I'm asking is, I won't be notified? I have to just find out on my own?
Yeah, I mean, they're supposed, the agency that releases them, wherever, is supposed to put that information out, and I don't know how it goes from there, whether they go to local papers, or they just put it out in one...I don't know. I don't know the details, but let me do some research on that, Bob, and just see actual, the details of how they do that.
Okay, okay. That's all I'm asking for.
All right, no problem.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
There's a website related to that, isn't there?
Correct. There's a public sex offender registry that you can come, and Vermont has one near...you can look in any state. It's open to the public. You just have to know, you either look at the location or towns, and it'll list, or you can do the whole state, and it'll list them all. So if you go to the Vermont one and do Rutland County, or let's say Castleton or a particular town, it would list the ones that are registered in those towns or county.
It gives you an address? Is that what it does?
Yeah, it gives you everything.
Okay, okay.
Yep. And it'll let you know what level they're at. Like, the ones that we have are not high level. There's three levels.
Okay.
Most of them are ones. But they've been pretty, they've been compliant. When I first came here, or maybe my second year here, I did make an arrest on one particular offender that did not record an address change from Middletown Springs to Castleton. So that is something that we do enforce. That's why we have to do those checks.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
All set?
I'm all set.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief. Approval of the fire department officers. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Captain and Fire Department Officer that follows. Keith Gayet, First Assistant Chief, Dan Dusharm, Second Assistant Chief, John Alexander, Captain Chris Fredda, Lieutenant Joey Smith.
I'll second that.
Hey, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sale of the air packs. Do you want to speak to this, or do you want the chief to? Chief Gayet, can you come up clear, please?
As you guys know, a few months ago, you made the motion to buy us 15 new air packs from ARPA money to replace our aged-out air packs. These are the air packs that have aged out. Again, Chris Fredda is, I don't know, everybody here knows him, that's what he sells stuff for a living. I tasked him with this, and he reached out to two vendors that buy used air packs to either recondition and sell, or piece and part out. He has a $1,200 offer back, and that's where that number comes. He is waiting on, there was one other one that I hoped to have by tonight, and we doesn't have, but I would hope that this would clean up all the old, out-of-date air bottles that are kicking around the station, and all the packs that we've just taken out of service, and get them basically out from underneath foot, because that's what they are right now. There's no real, there's no use or value to us at this point in time. So I would like the board to approve us the sale of this for no less than the $1,200 that we have an offer for, and hopefully that we could get some more dollars out of the other one if it come in in the next few days, if not, just sell them for that $1,200. And I would like to see the money put in for seed money into the sinking fund for the small tools and equipment, where the pack money that starts hopefully in March, when our budget goes, goes to.
I agree with that. That's where it belongs, in that fund. Do we need a motion for that?
I have a question first. I'm pretty sure we have a policy on selling town property, but I don't recall the details of it. Mike, are you, can you refresh our memories?
I can. Right now, it states that April and October is when the board, we bring stuff for the board for approval, unless it's items that can, should be sold, like police items that can't be sold to the public, have to go to another law enforcement agency, and I'm not sure who's buying those, Chief, as far as...
This is a air pack company out of Canada. That's the $1,200 bid. I can't, I don't know. I know Dalmatian was the other one, but this is an air pack. Somebody, Chris, found out of Canada.
So it doesn't totally meet that policy, but the issue is, if they sold these air packs to someone, and they're out of compliance, and somebody tried using them, or tries to go scuba diving with them, or something like that, it's just not, I don't think it's something, a piece of equipment that should be sold to the general public, and that's, we dealt with this before about not selling them to the public, and we tried to sell them to a company that refurbishes them, and we just never got any traction with it.
My recollection was that part of the principle behind the policy was that we thought the public needed to know when we were interested in selling something, that the sale should not, in effect, take place, you know, without notice to the public. And if that's what the policies, if we're required to advertise that these things are for sale, I think we need to adhere to that policy. So I'd like to wait to make a decision on this until our next meeting, which will give Chris perhaps the opportunity to bring a second bid to us. And then, if you could send us a copy of the policy, we could all review that before we make a decision.
Do we have such a thing as a book on all of our policies? We do?
Most of the ones that are new are out on the website, but not everything's out there right now.
There's a lot of stuff that's not on the website.
So that's just some, that's housekeeping stuff we got to, you know, get better at, but I'll get the policy out to the board members. I still, from a liability standpoint, I don't think these things should be sold to the general public either, so...
Yeah, I want to comment on that. I agree with Joe that we need to make sure that we're transparent and public, and that we adhere to whatever policies we have in place. So we need to see that and make sure that we do this right. But I'm going to pick on Rob, you're my guinea pig. I'm not going to sell them to Rob, because if he decides to put one on and go try diving, and he winds up injured or dead, we're, we don't need that liability. So we can't sell them to just anybody, can we? Do you agree with that, Chief?
I agree with that, oh, heartily.
Because these things are dangerous if you don't know how to use them. I'm sorry I picked on you, but you were there.
No, that's fine, but I would just say that, you know, you're not actually selling them to the general public, so I'm not sure if it really warrants putting it out there and having all the general public try to contact for a sale for something that they can't get. So, I mean, I can see, like, trying to sell a truck or something like that that can actually go to the public, then yeah, you need to be super transparent on that, but on an item that can't go to the general public, is that something that we really need to spend advertising money on?
I don't know that we're actually going to advertise it, but I do agree with Mr. Mark that we at least need to be sure what the policy says before we make a decision. But this probably will qualify to similar to police equipment, where it shouldn't be made available to the general public. So I think we'll hold off for, till the next meeting on this, Chief, and if Chris Fredda gets a better offer, then please make us aware of that. If not, then I'm prepared to authorize you to use this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, sale of Engine Two.
Might as well table that now, because it's the same policy.
So this, the best offer we've got so far is the only offer, is that correct, Chief?
We had one other offer from a salvage yard for way less money.
Okay. Yeah, because this is, this outfit is the company that, that's what they do. They refurbish old fire trucks or...
He wants them for parts.
He wants that pump out of it, doesn't he?
Yep. That's the main, that's his, the pump in the tank is his, where he could make his money back.
It's also the company that the new aerial is going to go to for its repairs, so the choice would be to get a check from the guy, or the board authorizes that they sell it to this guy, and it goes off, it comes off from the price of the repair being made to the aerial.
So, Mike, can you email me a copy of that policy tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
And then make hard copies available to the whole board, including me? Because if we need to advertise this, Chief, my opinion is, let's do that. You know, if we, part of our policy is we need to advertise to the general public that we have Engine Two for sale, then let's do that. And then if somebody wants to give us more, you know, 20% more than this offer, then we should consider selling it to them. But if we don't get a better offer, then we've done our due diligence, and you can go ahead and get this done. So we're going to table that for now?
Yeah.
Okay. Maintenance proposal for Castleton Tax Maps.
Might as well table this one, too, because Mary Jo was out sick, then I was out sick, and I haven't talked to her about this, and it's our annual mapping thing, so, but I don't, I can't ask, I couldn't answer your questions if you asked, if you asked me one right now, so...
It's dated back January 5th, too.
Well, the good news is that the new contract doesn't take, or doesn't, the new time period isn't until April 1st. So I would like to think we have at least two weeks to...
Well, the next meeting's three weeks away, I think.
Well...
So it gives me time to talk to Mary Jo and make sure what there was changes from the last contract to this one.
Because this is a period from April 1st, 2024, through March 31st of 2025. So I got to believe we have at least a couple of weeks to, for you guys to make sure you know what it is you're asking us to do.
And while you're at it, Mike, I just had a couple of questions, which, rather than wait until the next meeting, I'll ask right now. On A2... On A2 compilation, there's a notation that says not applicable. If you could find out what, what that's likely to mean, and just generally, it was hard for me to get my hands around how much work we're talking about here, and if you could come back to us with a rough idea of the number of changes in these, in some of these more important categories, I would, you know, are we talking about two, we talking about 52? I just, it's hard to know what we're paying for without some general sense of the volume of changes that are having to be made.
Is this $3,500 per year or a one-time shot?
Per year.
That's per year, and then an additional $20 per change, and I think that's what you're trying to get your hand wrapped around, right, Joe?
Well, just, in both respects, I mean, I can understand paying 20 bucks for a particular request, but most of this is just talking about all of the, you know, changes to subdivisions or boundary line adjustments and surveys, I have no idea how many of those are involved for $3,500.
Now, is this like if I want to put a new building at the farm?
I believe so.
I believe so too, but I really think Mike's right that we need Mary Jo here to...
And then it says that we have a next proposal to this, I don't have anything attached to mine. On the, on the last page, number one.
You're talking about...
Number one. This should be an attachment, here, here to an, a next.
So, isn't that what this is?
That's what I thought that was.
Perhaps.
So, the last page is just for signatures. Maintenance proposal is the previous two pages.
So, can you have this on the next agenda, Mike, and ask Mary Jo to be present?
I've already made the note.
Okay. Parsons Hill sidewalk project funding, this is all you, Mr. Town Manager.
So, in, I handed out some stuff to you tonight, Bob, if you don't have it, I'll email you.
Yeah, that's fine.
But...
Set this over here?
Yeah, it's this big colored hole thing. So, all I'm doing is trying to make the board aware of where we stand with funding for the three sidewalk projects that, that you've approved over the last two years. And so, the first spreadsheet is kind of a breakdown of what the projects are, the project cost, the grant award, I'm just reading across the top there, town share match, any cost for design, municipal project manager, or resident engineer duties, town share, and then there's a column over there that says town share source, and so this is obviously not something in stone, this is a recommendation, it's in my manager report as well. To be able to pay for all three of these, and our share, share of them, we cannot do that with what we have, so I'll draw your attention to the left side of the, of the page, starting where it says available funds through 6/30/2025. Everybody found that part? So, the highway carryover money, that's 196,542, 196,542, that's what we have. We also have $73,000 in the site, in the reserve account dedicated just to sidewalks, and then if the voters approve the budget in March, there'll be another 45,000 that's in the highway budget for sidewalks, for a total available of 314,542. Dropping down the next row, highlighted around in green, total required town matching share and design would be 541,000. So, a total shortfall, 541,400, I'm sorry, total shortfall without ARPA would be 226,858. So, basically, I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to paint the picture is, if you use ARPA for the two small-scale bike and pedestrian grants, so that means Parsons Hills and the South Street project that goes from the university to Main Street, if you paid for those out of ARPA, because ARPA's got a timeframe tied to it, and these two projects are the ones that, after talking with Fussin' O'Neal, that we could get out the bid and, and start working on this summer. So, that money, the ARPA money's available. The, the larger project, the large-scale bike and ped grant for the village, it's gonna come with a little bit more pain to get that thing completed, started and completed, and the money that we have, and I put it in there, 314,542, doesn't sunset. It's not like ARPA, like we have to use it by December 31st of 2026, so if this thing carries out, the money that, that we have in our coffers won't sunset, and that project will be funded. It's the, so, first thing is, we don't have enough to pay for all three, and second is ARPA, if you, if you chose ARPA, and I put it in this spreadsheet to show you where your numbers would land with the, what's already obligated, or been obligated, and what the proposals are, that you could, you could fund those projects and still have a balance, a positive balance of $28,460 of all, all the projects that are out there that are proposed. So, if we don't, if the board doesn't choose to use ARPA, all I can say is, we use the money up till it's gone, and then the first two projects on the list are the small-scale bike and ped grants, Parsons Hills and South Street, and then when it come time to have the money for that $1.2 million award that the town received for the village, we wouldn't have the money to pay our share of it, which our share, if you look up top, I put that in there, our share is 302,400. So, I'm not, I wasn't looking for any kind of motion, or I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because I still am waiting for some information from Fussin' O'Neal on what they would, what their exact charges would be under a contract to provide municipal project manager and resident engineer services for Parsons Hills, and then the other sticky wicket is the town had plans done for that South Street project, and it, and it got pulled due to funding, so Dan Minette from Fussin' O'Neal is working with the, Dufranes to see what it would cost to get that thing updated, energized, because it's already been done, so it shouldn't take much money to get it updated, and make sure all permits are in place, and, because there was easements through properties, and properties have changed hands, and so there might be a cost associated with that as well. I kind of guesstimated what they were when I put it in the, this ARPA spreadsheet, but I don't have the exact figures, so I'm just bringing it to your attention, that can't get there from here with what we have, and if you so choose to have the projects completed, we're, we either we're gonna use ARPA, and I don't know, we really don't have any other funding sources at this point.
Castleton Village, that's from the depot to South Street?
From Glenbrook, well, part of it was talking, went from Sant Hill to the Amtrak Station, just short of the Amtrak Station, but what the final ver, version was, was from Glenbrook to Mill Street.
What's Mill Street, is that the one just before the station?
Yes.
The one that goes down over where the mill used to be?
Correct.
Double check that, Mike, I thought the last version that we approved was the sidewalk from Glenbrook to, to the Amtrak Station on the south side of the road, and from St. John's to Mill Street on the north side of the road. Double check me on that.
Well, I think that there, I think you're right, on, on the south side of the street, it didn't go all the way to the rail trail, it stopped by the, is it the Hagley House? What's the Hagley House? Hagley House, right, and then on, then on the, on the north side, it went to Mill Street.
But, basically, the same.
Yeah, it's so, it's, it's not gonna go as far as, if anybody hears it out there, it's not really going to the Amtrak Station all the way down there, because the area that's east of Mill Street is, because it dips down in there, that the topography, they like, this would be a nightmare to put a sidewalk in there.
Well, that was one of the options that was presented to us, but as I recall, it was a pretty big number on it.
So, that's just a down and dirty, something to ponder and consider, I'll bring it back to the board once I have some firmer numbers from the engineers on it, but just...
And to refresh everybody's memory, the, the south, from the campus to Main Street on South Street was originally part of Phase One or Two of the Hydeville Castleton Four Corners project, and that was removed from that project basically because of cost at the time, but that was all engineered and done at one point in time, and then we, as a board, with, I believe your predecessor, or perhaps his predecessor, we made the decision to remove that project so that we could fund the sidewalks that we currently have. Anything else on this, Mike?
No, if you have any questions about what I wrote in that ARPA spreadsheet there, let me know. If it doesn't make sense, I tried to make, bounce those back and forth, making sure the numbers, and even in my, in the manager report, I, I took out some numbers and just used generics statement in there, because that way the numbers don't show up in multiple places and not match.
I have no questions, anyone else on the board, Mary Lee?
On what, on yes, I'm fine here.
On the sidewalks.
Yes.
Joe?
I'm fine.
Bob?
I'm good, Dick, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move on, we're gonna skip over the feasibility study, and we're gonna go forward with appointment for a three-year term for a health officer. Do I have a motion?
I would move that we appoint Mr. James Leamy to a three-year position as town health officer. Is there, would this begin at town meeting, or effective today? What's the term on this?
They, they heard him talking about it, I think it was, I don't know, I'm not gonna lie to you if I tell you, so I don't know if it was one February, but one February, one March, it's coming up soon, I don't remember what it was, though.
How, can you word your motion to commence upon the expiration of his current term?
Yeah.
Can we do that, Joe?
That sounds like a friendly amendment to me.
So, I have a motion, did I get a second? I have a motion and a second to appoint Jim Leamy as the health officer for a period of three years. Any discussion?
The, the form as, as prepared calls for the chair of the select board to sign this. I think we should probably have the vice chair sign it tonight.
That makes sense.
That's what, that's what Jim said, I asked him the same question, he said the vice chair usually signs it, so.
All right, so hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are no opposed, do I have that form in here?
I've got one here.
Because the start date's not written on it, anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, here's the original right here. Help me out with the date, please.
Today's date? The 22nd.
All right, that's done. We don't have a red folder.
Yeah, where is the red folder? I left that, I didn't even see it out there.
I'm asking you that.
I know. Could somebody, Heath, you have a, you can get next door.
What's that?
You can get next door.
Yep.
Will you, there was nothing out by the copier area where there normally is, would you look, go to the town office, look in the accounting office, and see if there's that red folder with the big rubber band on it, with all the...
Melanie's old office, that boy.
Yeah.
Yeah, specifically what we're looking for, Heath, it's a big red folder, but it will have the original warrants and purchase orders in it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just as a point, it's typically been on top of the file cabinet, behind Penny's desk.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We could, if we had to, probably change this to originals and go, and use one set of these if we had to, but that's not my first choice. All right, moving on, we have to approve the warning for the 2024 town meeting. Do I have a motion?
I would move that we approve the warning that we have been provided, and present that to the voters at town meeting.
I have a motion to approve the warrant, do I have a second? A warning, do I have a second? There is no second for this motion?
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second for discussion, so let's have a discussion, Mary Lee, you can lead off.
Okay, we went over it before, and whether or not it should say prior year such and such, Secretary of State frowns on it. I went to a Vermont Leagues, and I talked to Garrett Baxter of Vermont City and Towns relative to wording on the ballot, I gave him a copy of an article, and showed how it was previous such and such dollars, and he stated that it should not be on the ballot as it should, as it could unduly influence voters, so I went further, if you want to pass that, to the Vermont statutes, and it's, the way I read it, it's very clear that it's against the law, and I hate to think that Castleton is above the law.
You catch all that, Bob?
Why don't we just read...
Yeah, I got all of it.
I wanted to make sure you heard everything.
I did, I did, I have a question, though, about it.
Go ahead.
How do you know what direction it's gonna influence the voter? You make it sound like it's gonna influence the voter to say no.
It could.
But how do you know that? It could go the other way, too.
Sure could, but you're not supposed to influence them either way. And Joe has written up a, I don't know what you want to call it, explaining what's went up and what went down, and why it did, and I think that is more concise to anybody than just saying previously such and such, especially, you, you don't see it here, it says neither the warning, the notice, the official voter information card, nor the ballot itself shall include any opinion or comment by any town body, or officer, or other person on any matter to be voted on. And that's according to 17 VSA 2666.
I guess my question, Mary Lee, is whether... I guess my question, Mary Lee, is whether including the prior year budget figure falls under the category of opinion or comment.
As far as I'm concerned, it falls under both. You are commenting. You aren't commenting on what it was last year. You're giving an opinion in, in a backhanded way that, in this case, maybe that it's, so you will vote it down. It seems to me very clear here that it is an opinion or it's least a comment.
Well, in our previous discussion of this, one of the options we considered was adding this to the information handout, which includes the revenue that each budget article generate, generated in the previous fiscal year. That's been a handout for the last few years available to people in the back of the room or at a table in the lobby. I'm not sure that the handout falls under that first list that includes the warning, the notice, the official voter information cards, nor the ballot.
I'm referring strictly to the ballot at this point.
I understand. So, I mean, that would be another option that we have. Take it out of, off the ballot and put it on the handout. Who attend town meeting. That's, it's only the eighty people who attend town meeting who get to see those handouts typically.
So, the issue isn't so much that it's on the warning as that it would be on the ballot.
Right.
So, what is the harm in having it on the warning?
But it says neither the warning.
Oh, good point.
We do provide copies of the town report.
The warning, yeah.
At the, at the town meeting and out in the public, so, and they have the last year's budget figures in there. It doesn't say what it was. The summary might show the percentage. I guess, we were talking about how to put that in there the other day.
So, would a reasonable compromise be that we publish a document that has this information of what the current proposed budget is and what last year's budget was, but not have those parenthetical notes on the warning or the ballot? Is that what you're
Yes.
suggesting, Joe?
Yeah.
I would be prepared to support that.
As will I.
What do you think, Joe? Or, Bob, what's your name, Bob?
I, I like it on there. I, I just do.
Yeah, I know you do.
We've always had that. It's never been an issue, but you guys, you know, you obviously got different opinions. It just leaves people, you're not being transparent by having that on there. You're not.
You're also not being legal by having it on it.
So, we have at least one citizen that would like to comment on this, so feel free to do that, Mr. Steele.
I'll just say that before I became such an outstanding citizen in the town of Castleton, when I was, you know, paying property tax when I was younger, I can tell you firsthand if I saw an increase, I voted no. So, before I paid attention to, you know, any of the budget stuff like that. So, if it does, you know, it does sway opinions at times, that's all.
But it's going to be in the town report as well, which, which everybody has access to, whether it's online, in a store or venue around town, and at town meeting. But it's, it takes more time to compare the, what is it, thirty-four budget articles we have on there with the town report. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm pleased that you brought this up, Mary Lee, and took the time to investigate this as you have, and that would be my personal preference to pull it off the ballot and the warning and include it in a separate supplemental document along with the revenues that are generated, if any are. And, you know, in some cases, like the transfer station, the revenue figure is very, very important. So, I would be prepared to withdraw my motion and have one of you offer a different motion.
Want to take a shot at it, Mary Lee?
Okay, let's see.
She has to withdraw a second.
Yeah. As the seconder, you should probably withdraw your second as well.
I'll withdraw my second. I've even lost my sheet.
So, just for the minute's sake, Allison, Joe's motion to approve the warning as presented and Mary Lee's second have been withdrawn.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that, on the ballots, where it says prior year so many dollars that that be removed. And another article not connected right to this could explain differences in any monies received or whatever, trash, steel, whatever. Poorly worded.
Revenues?
Revenue. There you go.
Would it be appropriate, Mr. Parliamentarian, for me to paraphrase Mary Lee's motion?
Sure. I think we're all
Go for it.
open to suggestions.
So, my understanding of Mary Lee's motion would be to approve the town of Castleton warning as presented, with the exception of Articles Two through thirty-four do not include the prior year's expenditure information. And that, in addition to that, we publish a separate document that will show this year's proposed budget, last year's approved budget, and any anticipated revenues for that line. Is that accurate?
That's very good. Thank you.
I'll second that.
So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the warning as amended. Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Were you going to provide that, that separate sheet listing this stuff? Where, where is it going to be provided?
My opinion, at minimum, it should be A, posted on the website, and B, either included in the town report or made available on the town website, and also available to, as a handout at the town meeting, or the pre-town meeting.
Okay. I was hoping you would say that, not just say the town meeting, because we only have eighty people show up at town meetings out of forty-six hundred people in town.
I think we should make that document as public as possible.
Yes, thank you, Dick.
You're welcome. Mr. Steele, you have a comment?
Social media, don't we have a Facebook page for the town of Castleton?
We do.
Put it on that. Everybody's on Facebook.
If it's allowed?
All us youngsters are on Facebook.
There's, that's, that's correct.
Any social media that will allow such a presentation?
I have one more question.
Yeah, that's another one. Front Porch Forum, too.
Yeah. That's one. We usually post on all of those, the website, Front Porch Forum, and our, our Facebook page.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
I, I just, now, the new warning or ballot is going to have anticipated revenue in parentheses behind each article?
No.
The articles that have?
No.
Oh, that's not going to be on there either?
What we'll read, for example, Article Two will read, "Shall the town appropriate the sum of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and six dollars for legislating?" question mark. And that's the end of, the end of the question.
But it will be on the supplemental handout that is posted and printed and made available in a variety of formats and places.
Okay.
We'll call it a budget summary, perhaps. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I'll come up with a better.
Supplement.
Supplement, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think what, what I was talking about is they used to put on there less anticipated revenue for those lines or those articles that had a revenue associated with the departments. And, so that was, that's something the town has done in the past.
That was taken off for the same reason that Mary Lee wants to take this off, as I recall that discussion quite a few years ago.
Wasn't here, can't speak to that, but that's, I think that's what Bob stopped.
I'm trying to remember if I was on the board at that time or not. It's been a while since I was on. All right, so we haven't called this question yet, correct?
I've got one other question on, on the whole thing. This is written in red, said it had to be received by today. Have we received it?
It was.
It was, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that was validated? Okay. Any more discussion on the, the warning? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. All right, moving on. Managers' report. Don't take this the wrong way, Mike, but we just got this, and we hadn't had a chance to review it, so if you would provide us with the, the appropriate bullets that you think we need to know about?
Sure. Some of the sidewalk stuff we already talked about, so we'll bypass all that. On page three, number two, transfer station, on the ARPA worksheet, or that, that spreadsheet, I mean, I took off that six thousand dollars that was on there for the concrete, poured concrete walls, because when Jeff was up there and the person came in to give an estimate, that, that's, first of all, is not even in the realm of reality for one, and two, they don't want to piecemeal, like, put a section of poured concrete wall, try to tie it into a block wall. So, it's like all or nothing, and when, when he explained to me that they'd have to tear up all the asphalt behind, on the north side of the block wall and put rock stone in there for drainage, I'm like, this is getting into the way big money, so we'll just keep an eye on the block walls and keep the rats at bay and drive on. This is something that's been kicked around. I'm on page four, I'm sorry, I'm on page four, number three under, or number, sorry, number four under wastewater treatment facility, four B, sewer infrastructure. I sent the email to this company, Greenmount Pipeline, and the guy, I got the thing back saying they read it, but they still haven't replied. And we've been chasing them around since the board approved their, the contract for them, so I'm not sure, there's not many people, other businesses that do this, so we're, we may have to be searching around again. And this is for the closed camera TV of Sucker Brook Pump Station area, Crystal Havens, and for that line underneath the Castle and Four Corners. So, search might continue, because the guy read my email and he hasn't even replied, so don't know what's going on.
Now, you said you reached out to, to the engineer to see if they have any input or other possible options, or you were going to?
They, they, we've, we've talked about this with Aldridge and Elliott, that it's a gravity line underneath there, talked about sleeving it, but until we televise it, we really don't know what we're facing. So, it's, having, having the, the footage of that line, and it's confined space, they got to come in from the manhole on the southwest side of the intersection. It's, so down, down far, it has to be confined space, and so only certain companies can do that. So, we're, until we get them televised, we really, we're just going on what Aldridge and Elliott said from a, an observation in the past.
I think maybe Dick was...
We can do this as a sidebar. I'll talk to you tomorrow. Basically, I can't believe we're the only town that has this problem, and there might be other sources of getting somebody that is willing to do this.
Yep. I know, I know our wastewater technician has called other towns, and not all of them are dealing with confined space. That seems to be the real crux of this, and a long enough camera, because our, we have a hundred and fifty-foot camera, and, but we don't have the confined space part of it, so. And A1 only has a hundred and fifty-foot camera, too, so they have, they're no better off than we are. The hunt will continue. I'm on page five. It's on paragraph two, wastewater collection system expansion. I got a, I had a conversation with Jeff Lewis from Aldridge and Elliott, and they're about eighty percent complete with their design up there, and they want to have an in-progress review this week, so I will hopefully have, know more about where they're at and if they ran into any issues. On page seven, Highway Department, I did share some initial, initial costs. This is about paving. With the, with the board that the foreman had received from paving, and I don't know if you recall what those numbers were, but substantially more than what we have. So, I'll come back to the board once we find out about whether we're going to get a Class Two paving grant this year, and what we can do with that money versus maybe holding on to the money that we have budgeted and wait to the next year and combine the monies of those two fiscal years, and pick one road and finish it, and maybe get a better estimate or cost, because if they don't have to mobilize all over the place like they normally do with us, we'll get, we should get a better deal. That's, that's where a lot of the cost comes in, is they have to mobilize and move their equipment around several places in town. So, that, that might be something I come back to the board with, but if you saw those numbers, East Hubbard Road alone was three hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. And we have, we put in two hundred and thirty-nines in the budget this year, and so, it doesn't, it doesn't take long to, I guess, rack up a good bill with paving, which is, should be no surprise to anybody, I guess. The vehicle replacement, I'm on page number eight, under two, vehicle replacement. We pulled that package, that will come back to the board, and what I'm going to hand out tonight is a copy of the initial financials that we put together showing a vehicle replacement schedule going out twenty years, and what that cost might look like. And I did meet with, with Mr. Combs and the department heads for both the fire and highway department. Those numbers are, you're looking, the numbers are, are there. I mean, they're not, we're not making anything up, but, I mean, we're talking three hundred plus thousand dollars per department over the next eight years, per year, over the next eight years, just to get us in a position to get into a sustainment, because everything's come and due on that. It's thirty-five years old, or, and we have to save up enough money over the next eight years to be able to purchase something and then get on a replacement schedule. Otherwise, it will never work. Math is the math. I'm on page eleven, at the number nine, emergency management. On that ARPA, that ARPA spreadsheet, I proposed in there a generator for the garage, and I, I think I shared with the select board members that we have an old ONON generator up there that is a backup for the sewer department for two other pump stations, and in an emergency, they can plug that in and get power to, like, open the doors or run the furnace. But I think Heath tried it and it tripped a breaker when he tried doing.
Do them both at the same time, the way it's wired.
Yeah. And, and if they try to rewire it, then the pump, they can't use it for pump stations.
You want to do connections?
So, so then...
Yeah, you want to do connections?
Hey, Mary, we can hear you. Mary Droge.
Hold on, they're calling me.
So, I, on that sheet I put on there to consider, I, I have one quote, one estimate from a local business, and I'm waiting for another one right now. But it's going to be about the same price as the town office, which is somewhere between ten and twelve thousand dollars. And that would be the last major building in town that does not have a stationary emergency standby generator located at it. I'm on number 13, page 13, I'm sorry, E Apparatus. Again, I met with Dick Combs and the fire chief, and went over their vehicle replacement schedule, and like I just previously said, they're, they're, both of these are in that $300,000 range. And the so what of that is, the Highway Department puts in 100, yours is at 100, so that means that just to start into some kind of replacement program that's, we could sustain over time, it'd be a $200,000 increase per department. So, that's $400,000 increase over two departments, a year for the next eight years. That, that's wildly crazy, and we're trying to work through this and figure out, is there any other way? So, that, we haven't come to you with, from the Public Safety Committee side with any recommendations at this point. I'm barring your questions, that'll be it. But I do want to hand these out to the members, and you can take a look at it before we bring it back to you, just if you have any kind of concerns, or if it doesn't make sense.
Is this, which one's this one?
You have one already?
Public Works, I have one.
Okay.
Did you get one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, if anyone on the board wants to give me a call for, with questions, feel free to do that, after you have a chance to start digesting that. So, you're going to put a copy in Bob's mailbox?
Um, there's, there's a copy in Bob's and Jim's already.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any questions from the board to the town manager on the managers' report?
Can you give us a report some month with less bad news?
God, I wish I would, because, you know, it takes me like all day to do these reports, because I'm trying to back up and look at stuff, and it's always bad news, and I was like, like, I don't know. There will be, someday we'll have some good news.
Bad news, Mike.
My own toothache anymore, that's good news.
Having been in manufacturing management, I've seen, you know, we at least had good reports when we, or had a good report when we actually made a sales goal, or actually made a profit goal, but that doesn't apply to town management. Okay. We're going to move on to, Bob, if you're all set with the managers' report, we're going to move on to warrants. Purchase orders.
Yeah, that's.
I don't have any purchase orders, do you?
No. I'm sorry, I just, I, I put this in your packet, I didn't make sure everybody had one. That's an organizational chart, and it was an update, and I just wanted to, you know, get feedback from the board at some point, if this makes sense, or that you see something that's in error, because you, you had, you had seen this before, but there was a couple of changes, where the lines went. It wasn't like who was on there, it's just where the lines went.
Well, I really don't know that we want to get into a discussion on this tonight.
No, I just, I gave it to you just as a, so you could look at it, and if you had any questions, we can, because it never got posted anywhere.
Are we ready to move on to warrants? Whoever makes the motion for the first warrants needs to move warrant 0122 down into the second category, where I need to recuse myself.
That first one, then, the first one?
0122. Not 0122R, 0122. So, I would entertain a motion for warrants now.
I'll make a motion that we approve warrant 0122R in the amount of $8,400. Warrant 0112 for $7,250.50. Warrant 0118 for $39,165.51. Warrant 0111P, $18,922.81. And warrant 0118P for $18,128.95.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on those warrants. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Mark, would you call a question on the other three warrants, please, as I have to recuse myself?
Sure. Is there a motion regarding the remaining three warrants?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve 0122 in the amount of $98,218.30. Warrant 0112P, $613.30. And warrant 0119P, $613.30.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you both. Any discussion about those warrants? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Nay. Well, I guess we've all voted, so the motion passed.
So, Bob, if we, we'll talk to the town manager about how he's going to circulate these to you. If you could drop by the office at your convenience to sign the three warrants that I cannot sign?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Bob, when do you, when do you come back, Bob?
Wednesday night.
If I put them in your mailbox, you want to grab them, sign them in the mailbox?
Yes.
All right.
I'm good.
Thank you.
He could sign them all if he wanted, but he needs to sign the three that I can't, since. I believe by statute, they have to have at least three signatures, right? You got something I can hand to Joe?
Thank you.
It's a good excuse to stand up?
Yeah. I'm not sitting down again.
Seven, eight. Okay, we got all eight. So, select board comments and concerns. Mary Lee?
I was wondering if, Mike, if you would get us out a new list of who's on what committee? You know, some people have left, other people may be put on, so we have an up-to-date list.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe? I just wanted to say, in the spirit of bad news, that I misspoke last week when I said that it looked like the light out in front of the entrance to the medical center had been refocused. It hasn't been.
All right. I don't know what they're going to do, because they, they moved it around, so.
Right now, it almost shines straight down. I don't think it even reaches across the street.
I know there were complaints from some motorists leaving the medical center that the light was in their eyes.
That's, that's why they.
That'd be a middle ground.
Yeah, or.
It really needs to be on the other side of the light. They're shining, they're trying to shine it across that intersection.
There's no pole there, so.
It would help if the medical center did a better job of illuminating their sign.
It would. Couple of, some of other places, especially ones that receive emergency vehicles at night, they have those light, the stanchions out by the road with the lights on them that just delineate where the driveway is, which is the real issue, is seeing where the driveway is. And having rolled in here at 3:00 in the morning when the weather's horrible to get into one of those trucks in a hurry, it's time to hit in that driveway isn't always easy, is it, Heath?
I haven't hit the sign yet, but I'm worried someday it's been close.
You'll have to replace it, that's why.
I've never hit the sign either, but.
I thought I was going to.
There's, there's been times when the weather's been awful, and we've been in a hurry where it wasn't so great, so.
That's it for me.
Bob, any, any questions?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one for Mike. I noticed an advertisement, and I don't even worry about, oh, probably Front Porch Forum, "We're looking to hire another full-time road crew person." Or, did we just lose one?
Yes, the, the youngest guy, Jacob Wilcox, left and took the job at the transfer station, so that's why it's a vacancy there.
How many road crew guys do we have now, and obviously, we added one to that. What do we, what do we have for road crew guys now, Mike?
Equipment operators, there's plow, you know, truck operators, there's two, plus a mechanic and the foreman. So, two, two operators, the mechanic and the foreman.
We have four, four guys that are on the road crew now?
Well, that, that work in the Highway Department, I mean, Jeff's the foreman, so he's not like out in a crew all, all, you know, very rarely, because of all the administrative requirements, but Evan does fill in when he can on, like, if he has to plow, or in the summer grade, but, you know, he, he is the mechanic.
Okay. Then we have, we have Heath and Mike?
Yeah, and we have one vacancy that we're trying to fill.
Okay. Okay.
So, we go back to Mary Lee?
I think I got it straight.
You all set, Bob?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Mary Lee?
Have we contacted Mr. Schlemming relative to Honoray and Joe, Joe Bruno's being dedicated?
They, they've both been contacted, Lynn was contacted, and Ram was contacted, and they both said yes, and appreciative, and they, they're working on, those two people are going to help work on putting together a biography or a tribute.
That's all.
All right, I'm all set. Okay, so, moving on. Okay, action items, we've got, we all got to review the local hazard mitigation plan before next meeting, and Mike is going to provide us with our copies. And we also need to review the policy on the warning of sale of town property, and Mike is going to provide us with a copy of that. That's all I've got. Anyone else have anything that we need to?
Other than he's going to.
The others.
Do the committee.
The committee, and I have the tax, I got to meet with Mary Jo about the, the tax map.
Yep.
Get those questions answered, and check on the middle ground for the light again at the health center.
Okay, anything else we've forgotten, Bob?
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay. Do we need an executive session?
Personnel.
So, we need to entertain a motion for executive session for personnel?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel to include the selectmen and Mike.
Second.
The town manager.
It's been moved and seconded, we go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.